Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission 10:00 AM meeting of September 6, 2022. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Please call the roll.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 3 Chairman Starkin.
Here.
Okay, now's the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on any, on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those who are pre-registered for WebEx Link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when the time is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
I don't have a public comment sheet. I don't believe anyone's signed up for the 10 because I see it was pulled. No one.
Okay. Is there anyone in the room here that would like to address the Board of County Commissioners this morning? Madam Clerk, is there anyone online who wishes to address us?
No one's online.
Okay. Well, this will conclude the public comment portion of the meeting. The next order of business is the consent agenda. I have C8 pulled by Commissioner Fitzpatrick, C9, pull and discuss Fitzpatrick, and C12, pull and discuss Fitzpatrick. Number four is Robert Gearing, C24, withdraw. Also, C26, withdraw. And then Chantel Sicard, C100, pull and revise. Board members, is there anything else you'd like to see pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing nothing, I'll accept the motion.
Move and approve.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay, we are on C8.
Thank you. I would just like to mention, for the training burn tower for the fire rescue, it will be in, in the second week in November, and it'll only take a couple of days to install, and it should be operational in November or December.
Great. I'll take a motion for C8.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I would like to also point out that C9, Fire Station Number 2, it is going through the design and engineering stage, and it will be under construction the summer, the spring or summer of 2023.
Wonderful. Which one, where is that one located?
Westy Chapel.
Westy Chapel.
Fifty-six.
All right. Any other discussion? I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I want to clarify the motion approving the consent items that were not pulled. Was that also to include the addendum consent items?
Motion maker?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
One of them. One of them, just one of them's pulled.
Yes, the 100 is pulled.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on C12.
And lastly, I would just like to point out, the E1 heavy hazmat vehicle is being ordered, and the funds are going towards it.
That's not a cheap one, is it? 1.2 million?
1.2 million, and it will take about a year or a year and a half to build.
Okay. Any more discussion? I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. C24 is withdrawn, C26 is withdrawn, C100, pull and revise.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joanna Cheshire, Chief of Staff, County Administration. I'm here to speak on C100. This is, the item is in a local agreement with the sheriff's office in the county, but we're here, we're pulling this, we're revising it because there's a minor issue with the final contract for the commissary item listed in Exhibit F of the contract list. It will not be ready for BCC approval, but we'll just add that to the list for the county administrator to sign when the time is right.
Okay. Is it, is it me, or is it hard to hear?
I think that needs to be turned off.
Is that microphone off?
It's on.
I know, but the volume is not right, in my opinion. Okay. Well, if y'all heard what she said, are you ready for a motion because I didn't hear it?
Move and approve.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Thank you. Okay. We are now on the Rs, I'm trying to get to. R67, that's an 11:00 AM time certain. R68, Public Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paula Recalda, Director of Support Services, standing in for Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator for Public Services. I would like to introduce to you this morning Ms. Janina Elkin, who has been selected and hopefully will be confirmed this morning as the next Director of Go Pasco, our Public Transportation Department. Ms. Elkin is slated to start on September 12. She comes to us with over 20 years of experience in the transit industry in different capacities, such as operations, customer service, project management, marketing, and grants management. She has also worked in implementation of technology solutions like intelligent transportation systems and real information to help improve customer satisfaction and ridership. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration and most recently served in Hernando County in the role of Transit Coordinator, where she was responsible for the administration, financial oversight, and coordination of Hernando County's public transportation and transit programs. With that, I respectfully ask for your confirmation of Ms. Janina Elkin as Director of Public Transportation, Go Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Well, first we'll take a motion and make sure you're welcome. Thank you, welcome.
Move and approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Well, welcome to Pasco County. You didn't have to go very far, did you?
No, no, thank you very much. I really appreciate you guys having me today again. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to serve my county, to be able to lead our this department, the public transportation, and especially be able to work with the team and make our department greater for the benefit of the community and our residents. So, thank you again.
Wonderful. I serve on T-Barda, and Jack and Christina and I serve on the TMA, so I'm sure we'll get to know you much better and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, Janina, welcome back. You were with us a few years back, so up to Hernando County. So hopefully, we've got good relations there, we can work with, do some other transportation connections up there as well.
Oh, definitely. Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're on to 69.
I'm James Flaherty, Assistant Director, Go Pasco. We're just asking that you authorize the execution, or give our new director, Janina Elkin, the ability to authorize and execute FTA and USDOT grants.
And these are what we approved on our NPO meeting?
Correct. These are 5307 grants that are going, ahead in the future, 5307, 5339.
Pull. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Miscellaneous business.
What time is it?
Commissioner Oakley.
Where's your group?
That's a time cert.
It's 11 o'clock. What do you think we'd be done this point?
I'm too fascinated.
That's right.
That's awesome.
All right.
Well, a lot of things happening in the county. We had our first workshop meeting for Lakouchi in this past week. Went very well. I look for that to continue going forward, and actually, that community coming back, the school being back up to more than 50%, hopefully in the 70% or 80% feeling in the near future. So, a lot of things got to happen in that area, but that, that area around Trailby, Trail Lakouchi, and Lakouchi will continue to grow, and there's a lot of pressures on it because we're getting a new four-lane road from 301, from 50 all the way down 301, back into where it is four-lane now. Four-laning also around Date City on the bypass, and then, of course, probably around June or July, we will have the new Route 52 being complete, and they'll start moving forward with that across, coming across 301, bending the new road toward 98, 98 to the county line over in Pope County, it'll be four-lane. So, a lot of things happened, a lot of roads are going to be complete in the near future that, that we've been struggling with the construction all going on, like diversion diamond, and it's coming together and it's moving very nice. I've been through it a couple of times. And, of course, overpass, paid by Pasco County, that overpass, hopefully toward the end of October, we'll have a conclusion on the overpass, and that'll be operating, and it helps spread out that traffic. Things will get better near the Wesley Chapel area, Mr. Moore, so it'll help all of us. So, that's basically all I have this way.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll talk really slow to get us to 11 o'clock.
No hurry. You get a break.
Well, I guess first of all, congratulations are in order for Mr. Carbala, if we all saw on our consent agenda today, his contract. So, he is official now, so congratulations, Mr. Carbala.
That means we pick on him more.
Yes. He's the real deal now.
Yeah, there you go.
Let's just go over some tourism things. We had some major events over the summer at Advent Health Center ICE, that our tourist office, Adam Thomas and his team at Forte Sports Co. partnered on. Tours roller skating tournament again, was it 2,643 room nights? So, that's really, really strong. And that's, tours, the roller skating, that's the, I call it, it's not really roller skating, it's roller hockey, right? They do it on inline skates, but that's pretty big. You actually have former NHL, NHL player, minor league NHL players that actually play in that as well, so it's a pretty neat tournament. Sunshine's Cup Hockey Tournament, that was 1,386 room nights, very strong. Then they recently had the U.S. Figure Skating National Showcase, 809 room nights, and that was a really, really big event. Actually, my, my daughter got my, my son to volunteer. He actually volunteered there to help out. They needed volunteers because they were coming from all over the nation, and the figure skating folks are from up north somewhere, so they needed a lot of volunteers.
No wonder so busy in Wesley Chapel.
There you go. But those are all conservative figures. Our final numbers really haven't come in. We have a feeling that those numbers are even better than what, that we've published so far, but again, these are the people that are coming to our, our county, they're eating in our restaurants, staying in our, in our hotels, and supporting our small businesses, and we really appreciate that. So, congratulations again, Adam, and your team for constantly bringing in those big, big tournaments. We talked about the Port Ritchie CRA last, last time, that they're going to be voting on pulling another area out. They did, so, I know we're all happy about that. Good thing for everyone, so we appreciate the mayor and council and the new city manager for working hard on that. I was going to talk about this, but I'm going to wait because I need to talk to Mr. Carbala before. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Go ahead, we have time.
No, no, I want to check on something before, actually.
Well, I do too, so please check your phone and give me an answer.
But, I will talk to him, and well, maybe I'll, I'll bring it up next time. Ralph, do you want to come up? Ralph is going to come up and give us a update on the legislative grant program. We talked, I think we all, I'm pretty sure you guys all probably talked to him yourselves, but he has an update on the budget request for the summer legislative grant program, for some people apply for.
Good morning, Ralph Lair, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer. So, as a reminder, during the legislative session this past year, the speaker put in a pot of money for local support grants, for $175 million. This will be money that the Joint Legislative Auditing Commission, which is made up of both House and Senate members, will consider, and these projects do not have to go to the governor, so he, he doesn't have veto over this particular pot of money. So, on Friday, the Joint Legislative Budget Commission noticed a meeting for this coming Friday, September 9, and one of the items on there is to consider local support grants for fiscal year '22, '23, among their other businesses. 238 projects, we made the cut, out of 971 projects requested, and the total is $175 million. So, we submitted two projects, the Ankle Park Project for additional boat ramps for $1.8 million, and the Strickland Park, $1.85 million. Out of those two, we are getting one partially funded for Strickland Park, for the seawall and additional beach sand, for $1 million. In addition, Pasco County, other projects, Am Skills is looking to receive $350,000. The Pasco Sheriff's Office Cyber Security Center, $1.5 million. The Pasco Sheriff's Office firearm range expansion for $1.1 million. The Academy at the Farm, big winner, $13.1 million.
Is that for the Aquatic Center?
For the.
Is that the one that was?
At the academy? I think that's for the.
Wasn't someone trying to do a?
For water and sewer?
No, pool. So, you.
No, not a pool. This is for the high school.
A high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to build a high school. They have, there are modulars out there right now.
And then, for the school board, Epic Angeline, which is the school connected to the MOPIT, will receive $1 million. And last but not least, Sarah Vanenburg Tennis Center, $2.75 million. So, Pasco did quite well out of that $175 million pot. Again, not official until Friday, it's on their, like, consent agenda, so.
What does, what did that total?
For a total amount, I didn't add it up, so one, about $20 million?
Damn.
At a $175?
Huge.
Thank you.
Okay. Hey, while he's up there, and we have time, or I could call you back up during mine.
Whatever you want to do.
So, when would you like us to start thinking about what our ask would be for this year?
So, so, because it's an election year, as required in the state constitution, session will begin in March. We don't anticipate the delegation having their meeting until January, so I want those projects ready to go by the end of the year, so we can start having meetings with our delegation as they, as they decide. So, I would say, if you have something in mind and you need to meet with staff to, to talk about projects that you would like to see funding for, start doing it now, or in the next couple of months, so we can bring that in for landing, and I can try to get sponsors within Pasco legislative delegation to, to submit those. And as a reminder, our delegation structure, our delegation is changing, we're going to get, we still have three House members, we will be getting two new House members, one on the west side and one in the central portion of our county.
Three, because we have Holcombe.
Holcombe, too.
Yeah.
What was that?
Steel.
Oh, that's right, we do have, so we did increase one, take that back. So, our delegation is growing, so we have one from Hernando County that will dip in just into Pasco County, and then we have three commissioners, or three senators.
When, when will they get their assignments?
Oh, they won't get that until end of December, maybe beginning of January, they'll start getting information.
The same goes for leadership assignments?
Correct.
I, I think that Hooper's getting Ted appropriations chair.
Yeah. It's, it's a perfect fit for him.
Okay, so we have time.
So, you have time, but, you know, again, start thinking about those, let's get them in a posture. I'm not going to say don't put in big, high-ticket items, but I think the days of Pasco County receiving high, high numbers is, might not be in this upcoming session, but you never know.
Well, maybe our chances of being vetoed have gone down, too.
Yeah.
So, I think the state got some infrastructure money that has to be spent by such, by a certain date, that's a little bit independent of the regular budget money, if I'm not mistaken.
From the feds?
Yeah.
Okay.
And.
So, normally, when they receive funding from the feds, sometimes it's discretionary, and I'm not aware which pot of money this is, it's given to the, the department and the governor to, to disperse that funding, or it's get, put into a particular grant program. And again, right offhand, I cannot think of any recent money coming down from Washington, except for environmental dollars going into FDEP for their grant program.
Okay, I know why.
I'll go back and check, and I'll go back and look. I'll just go back and look.
I, I thought in the infrastructure bill, they got some money that could only be used on, on roads and bridges. Let's double check.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, and that's part of the Ray's Grant.
And we, we, I thought that's where some of that money was coming, we, the Ridge Road Ask was going to be coming from that pot that has a time certain to be spent? No? I don't know where.
No, I'm not sticking with it, no.
No, and we're pursuing a different avenue for the Ridge Road extension, so we'll, we'll have that worked out. If I could just add one thing to what Ralph said, I would, I would encourage you to, if you have projects in mind, talk with the Assistant County Administrators over those, over those areas, and then work with the directors, because again, we'll want to make sure, there's probably some backend work that needs to be done in order to properly cost and, and model the projects, or, you know, and a lot of projects we already have on the books, so please have those discussions with, with those individuals first.
Yeah, start working on mine. Okay, well, that was my legislative question.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
Are you done, Commissioner Moore?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. First, I'd like to mention, if anyone knows anyone elderly or disabled that can use help around their homes, the Somebody Cares is hosting their Cares Fest on September 25th, so if you would like to refer them to Somebody Cares, or if you would like to come out and volunteer that, volunteer that day to help one of our citizens in Pasco County.
What are we looking at there?
Since this photo is up, I did take it from Facebook, so it is publicly available. I don't know. So, the board had approved to replace all the traditional extrication equipment, and it has brand-new Hearst, Hearst hydraulic, submersible spreaders, cutters, and ramps, and it looks like jaws alike to me, so.
Wow. How many are in that picture?
I don't know. I took it from the internet. Took it from Facebook.
That's all for our county?
That was from Chief Kason's page, and it looks like Pasco County.
Looks like 50 something, probably, huh?
Yeah, so it's very exciting, as Pasco continues to approve new equipment for our citizens and the firefighters. Next, I would like to mention, I know I'm very excited, I've been working on the L.A. Lisa Project since I've been here, and it will be coming up to bid this next meeting, so I'm very excited to see that finally come, move forward. Of course, I've been out in Moon Lake numerous times, and looking at all of the flooding and the roads, I am looking at the non-passable roads, and I will have a suggestion at the next board meeting, so if anyone has any questions on that, I would like to move that forward. And another big project that I'm working behind the scenes on is, I'm working on a homeless program to, and also, an opioid program that can help women that are pregnant, that are dependent of the system, so they can move forward to being self-sufficient and being a productive member of society, so they can have a better quality of life. So, those are some of the projects that I'm working on, and I'm, that's it. Thank you. Oh, wait, lastly, it's very exciting, I did get a message, an email from FAC, so on behalf of the FAC president, I have been appointed to the policy leader, as a policy leader to the FAC Health, Safety, and Justice Policy Committee for the 2022-23 Policy Development Process. So, that's very exciting.
Commissioner Moore. I mean, Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you. Couple of things. There's a piece of property we own at Fox Hollow in 19, just on the east side a little bit. We bought it for a maintenance facility. It looks like it's light storage now. I'd like to take a, have us take a look at putting it out of its surplus, see if we don't need it.
Oh. Where is it?
It's at Fox Hollow 19. It used to be the old used car dealership's maintenance thing. We were using it for a while, it looks like it's just a lot of storage right now, and there's a few other acres behind it that are undeveloped that, again, on that, on that corner, might be.
Is it some weekend workforce? Is it some weekend workforce housing on?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, don't surplus.
Well, let's, let's take a look at it to, for what we're gonna do with the property, so.
We can, we can certainly go back and look and see what the proposed use was. I don't care if that was for a fleet facility or not, but let us take a look at it.
If you're gonna use it, that's fine. If you're sitting there and we're not, then that's a different, different call.
Absolutely, we'll take a look, thank you.
All right. And talking to future Representative Holcomb the other day, congratulating him on his win, we talked about County Line Road. And as we've talked about County Line before, we want to see it done, we've moved it up to the higher parts of our list now, up at the top. And he was concerned that he still hadn't received the interlocal agreement from us. And I told him we're working on it, it wasn't gonna be a problem getting it, so Mr. County Attorney, maybe you'll, do we have that sent out already or is it being looked at?
Commissioner, I think I can provide more information on that. So per the previous board direction related to the MOU and the sewer, we are approaching those in parallel. So the Public Infrastructure Branch, NPO, are working on the MOU for County Line Road. We're also concurrently working on an interlocal sewer agreement that we'll be bringing back to the board here in a few months to, to run those items through.
Okay, the, the interlocal or MOU, whatever it may be, because I think it could be either way, but he understands how we had it in our budget of funding and went through the House and the Senate and got turned down. He would probably bring it forward again on his side and probably get support. So if, if I could, I'll have you guys reach out with him and I'm probably set a meeting up and we'll have the conversation with what he's looking for to make sure we're working together with whatever they need. And I appreciate what you're doing because that water sewer is, I mean, the sewer connections up there is a phenomenal thing and I trust your expertise to get that done. At the same time, I don't, if it's just one little thing that won't slow it down and show them that we are committed to working with them, it may, may, may help him as we look for appropriations coming up to, to make that happen.
I think our NPOs are working together on the roadside. I'm working very closely with their county administrator and their team, so happy to inform and do whatever they think.
I want to see one little detail like-
Absolutely.
Put a little negative to it, so great. Another thing, I was at a presentation and I, I was trying to get the name of the company, I don't have it with me, but they do internship programs for autistic children. Pepin Academy was at the meeting, they had school board members there at the meeting.
Able, able, the able-
The meeting we were at at Centura?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's right. Sorry, Commissioner.
Able Trust.
Able Trust, okay, so what a phenomenal presentation I thought it was. I'm just wondering if we could take a look at what we can do in the county to help with these intern programs that we can actually do, I think there's gotta be some things that are out there. I was talking to a gentleman, we were talking about it and like, for instance, he's a postmaster and he said there's, in the Boston area, probably thirty-two jobs right in his one post office. We could actually work with those folks and help them get to work right away and put them to work permanently when they graduate from high school, et cetera. So whatever we can do to try to help Pepin Academy, Able Trust to go forward, I think is something good and that could be one of our legislative asks, we might be able to start our own little program right here in the county. So.
So, so we tried a little bit with the Clerk's Office because there, there is a, there is a program in Hillsborough County-
Yes, sir.
That's with the Public Defender's Office that, that brings on young adults with special needs, that she's been doing it a long time, Julie. And there, there are funds available in, through some of the federal programs that could help fund a lot of it. I would love to see us be able to, to have that here and it seems like some of the government agencies are the best place to start.
And maybe even, even set them up with, maybe AM Skills Training Works for her, too.
Yeah, we've tried, we, we have, we have had some people come through with special needs and some we've been able to place. I think we had one come through in our boot camp, the other few boot camps ago that, I don't, I'm not sure if we were able to place that person in the company. But we have, we, we have a woman in Hernando that does soldering and she just loves to solder and she's just a great solderer, so yeah, we, we will definitely be looking at that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, you, you'll be engaged, Commissioner, I'll be in there as well, it was, it was great and I think there's some good potential coming up.
Yeah. I'm glad you both went to that.
Yeah, I'm through. Sure.
Commissioner Mariano, thank you for bringing that up. I know there have been about, they have the summer camp now that serves our special needs population as well. They had about thirty special needs children this past summer, but maybe if we can add or expand to do a, a summer camp or an intern summer program for our special needs children.
Excellent. Yeah.
All right. The county administrator?
Thank you, ma'am. Really, just a quick shout out to libraries, I thought this was a well-timed month of September is featuring NASA-themed reading activities. This kind of coincides with NASA's Artemis Project, which hopefully will get off the ground later this month, but really a lot of great things going on in libraries. And also Parks is happy to announce that they have opened another new playground at the Samuel W. Pasco Athletic Park. It's a tree and nature themed park or with playground equipment that includes ADA as well as mommy and me swing, so very exciting stuff. That's all.
Okay. County Attorney?
I don't have anything generally for you, thank you.
Yeah, I have two quick updates. One is our office is kicking off the Constitutional Essay Contest. It is something we've done for the past ten years where we ask fifth graders in our public schools to write an essay answering the question, why is the Constitution important? And it's in celebration of Constitution Day, which is September seventeenth. And one other thing I want to mention is a jury duty scam that is going on, not just in our county, but in other counties that are surrounding us. It is where an individual is called and they are told that they missed jury duty and there is a fine out for them and if they don't pay the fine immediately, then they'll get arrested. And the individual is directed to go and buy gift cards, scratch off the back of the gift card, read out the number over the phone and, and then that satisfies their, their, their paying of the fine. I know. And it's something that happens.
It's crazy.
But I just want to state in public that my office will never call you to ask you to pay in the form of the cards. So that is not a form of payment that we would request for you. It also, I've heard from our customers that they require them to stay on the phone while they drive to the store to pick up the cards.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, they're going to stores, like, is this a Macy's gift card they're going after here or it's, I mean, whatever the latest trends are?
It, it might be.
Target?
So just letting you know, letting the public know that that is a scam, don't fall for it. They obviously must be very good at threats over the phone to get people to do that and leave their home and get those cards. So it, it must be serious threats over the phone. That is not something we would do.
I had, I had one the other day, it was a publisher's clearinghouse, I just won the grand prize.
Oh, you did?
Did you win?
I wouldn't go.
Good job. But you're here today, so it wasn't the big prize, right? What, a magazine?
That's it, thank you. Okay, to me, so first I want to mention about the scallops, scallop season. If you saw in the paper, there was an article today and I, I want to formally discuss how we, since we don't have Commissioner Wells sitting here, how we move to expand that and what the steps are. And who would do that? Here comes Ralph.
Good morning again, Ralph Lear, Governmental Affairs Officer. That would have to be a decision by the Fish and Wildlife Commission. If that is something you all want to pursue, we'd have to get it on their radar when they take that issue up at one of their board meetings. I can check into that.
So I think we should at least, if we can open up for the full season, I think we at least say, let's baby steps and double it and just grow into it maybe, but-
And I think that's, all along, they wanted us to be very cautious and careful when they originally approved it. I was there with Commissioner Wells when the, when the commission opened it up for those two weeks. I think, again, if we, we talk to staff now and find out, is it something we can expand, maybe not get too carried away and crazy, maybe a month, I, you know, I'm just throwing that out there. Because if you, if you also remember, it wasn't, what usually is a good season for Hernando every year was not, and Citrus County was not. So the commission probably will ratchet it back and, and, and lower theirs.
But it was, it was fine in Pasco County.
But it was good in Pasco County, that's correct.
So-
Correct. And our Parks team, they were out there collecting data and information and that all feeds into the equation, but we understand that we'd like to see an increase in that and so we'll, we'll certainly take it up with, with your approach.
Well, I think Commissioner Mariano and then Commissioner Moore.
I just had a suggestion.
I, I think what we should be looking for is to match what Citrus and Hernando both have. Whatever they do, if they want to bring them down or bring us up, however it may be, but that's, that's the approach. And I think we should go with our legislators and get them involved, let them put some push on it for us, too. With their support, I think it'll make it easier to get, to get a change.
I think Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think if, and maybe it comes from the chair, maybe it comes from Ralph, maybe it comes from tourism, I think Property President Wells would be willing to help, I'm not, not trying to, you know, give him a new job to do, but he's built really strong relationships with Fish and Wildlife and he was very instrumental in helping to get that done while he was on the commission. So I have a sneaky suspicion he'd be probably at least willing to go to one of the meetings and help out and maybe, maybe Adam's willing to go as well and work with him or whatever. It's, I, I, I'll ask him and see what he thinks, I'd have no problem asking him. But he's, he's built those relationships through the years, am I not right?
Sure, that's correct.
You know, so relationships matter.
Well, do we want to-
As well as the legislators, like you mentioned.
Do we want to go for the full season or do we want to go to like double it?
I kind of like what Commissioner Mariano stated was, let's try to get the same as what Hernando and Citrus have.
But I think there's a good chance they're gonna scale back next year and let it rest.
Well, that'll be longer than ten days, though, I would assume, because are they not-
As long as it's not canceled.
Are they three months? What are, they're three months, right? Approximately three months?
Yeah, I'd say go for it all.
So if they scale us back, they scale them back and we get a month, that's a lot better than ten days.
What, what I, someone told me on one of my scalloping expeditions was that it's, it's normal for scallops to have a reset year or two and so we're probably in that reset year. Because I, I don't know, a lot of people don't realize those scallops, if, if you don't get them, they die. I mean, it's, they don't live longer than a year, but we need them to be-
There's, you know, there's a lot of other issues in the equation. Our seagrass is healthy along the coastline, Red Tide has an impact. So I think we hear your point, you know, it's something that we need to start looking at. I'll get with Parks as well as we pursue trying to take that before the Fish and Wildlife Commission to see if they will expand it.
All right. So let's ask Commissioner Well, I mean, Wells.
Property President.
Yeah, Property President Wells, maybe you can ask him if he wants to do that and if not, then we'll take it up.
Ralph, if you'll get with me, we can talk to Eric Sutton, he's the executive director and, and I've been friends since SwifMud, he used to do it with Lance in SwifMud, so I can call him.
Okay, great.
Another connection.
Yeah, Eric's a great guy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And just so you know, the, if you would like to move ahead, the eleven o'clock time service is here now. It's your call.
Well, let me, let me finish my-
Sure, just wanted to let you know they are here, so.
Okay, I wanted to talk about fences for a second. Just want to make sure that, you know, we said no more barbed wire fences on certain roads. I want to be clear what roads we said and I want to check and see if we want to expand that. I don't know if you've been getting those emails, but I, I've started to get emails from people who are complaining about barbed wire fences. I think I forwarded one to you on, on our roads, so I, I, you know, I don't want to see any on Little Road, I don't want to see any on Rowan, I mean, there's, there's just no need for barbed wire fences unless it's out in the country.
Or ag.
Well, if you've got ag use on there-
Yeah.
It calls for a barbed wire fence.
Yeah, we said, we said an ag use. But for example, when I was driving out here this morning on fifty-two, PA has moved their operations from, is moving their operations from fifty-four to fifty-two and they have chain link and barbed wire and are we gonna call that ag? But it does, fifty-two's gonna look like fifty-four one day and we're gonna have mistakes made that are hard to go back and clean up, so. I also want to, I'm gonna get with Brad, I don't know if he's here, on my own and, and understand the landscaping rules we have for commercial development, because I think they're, they might be a little vague, more vague than maybe we want, because I've been running into some issues. But anyway, I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page about what roads we want to have barbed wire fences on. I'm assuming you don't want them on chain link and barbed wire on Bruce B. Downs and Wiregrass Ranch Boulevard and, you know, so we need to, we need to take a good look at that.
We gotta be careful at fifty-two because still I'll have a rural area and, and fence it.
I mean, cattle, cattle and barbed wire, that's-
Right.
You're stating basically not on commercial.
Yeah, nope, yeah.
I've noticed barbed wire fencing around RV storage locations or boat storage locations.
Yeah, and they don't, some do and some don't, but I, I'm not sure that that's necessary. Or if it's in the back, okay, but across the front, no, you know, so we really need to be careful. Okay, so I was appointed to something, oh, there was a photo up there, so I want to thank, it says here Florida State Representatives, they're not actually sworn in yet, but Jeff Holcomb, who's the new one from Hernando and Northern Pasco, Adam Anderson, who is replacing Chris Sprouse, it's actually his cousin, his seat, and then Brad Jaeger, who's the replacing Amber Mariano. They, they all talked about workforce training in their, in their stumps and so I said, well, come see a program. And Jeff was a little familiar with it, but Brad and Adam knew nothing about it, but they loved it and they, immediately, how can we help? How can we expand this? So it was, it was great. So I'm grateful to them for coming and I'm gonna get another round. Kevin Steele couldn't make it that day. Only gave him a couple hours notice, so I'm not sure why he couldn't make it. Okay, I was thankful to be appointed to something else, like I needed something else to do. But I am, Chris Sprouse has appointed me to the Florida Alliance to end human trafficking, so I'll be working with people around the state to end human trafficking, so. Lastly, Tibarta. Okay, so Tibarta continues to have issues and the Tampa, the regional, no, the Tampa Bay Partnership is trying to help us move forward because when you, when you have a county in the middle who isn't playing in the regional sandbox, it's very difficult to do anything. And so they want to step in and try and see if we could get past issues. And we have a very big meeting, it's a workshop, Friday, September ninth, I believe. I've asked if we could get some of the new, I think we should get some of the new commissioners there who may get involved in transportation and, and Commissioner Holcomb is bringing the new commissioner that will probably be appointed to Tibarta from Hernando down to the meeting so they can be brought up to speed. You know, we have some new members on Tibarta and so they don't know the history of some of the big projects that we've looked at, for example, the Rapid Bus. And so it's like, when someone new gets appointed, then they don't know the work that we've done and where the majority of the board has tried to go, we have to reset and educate everybody again, so. I don't, I don't know what the future is, but it's very frustrating to be the largest metropolitan service area that has no transit solution. And if CSX doesn't want to sell us the rail line anymore and they want only to lease it, is what it looks like right now, the state won't put money into a lease, they only will put money into something they own, then our only opportunity are, right now, are the BRT routes. We're under, going through a study on nineteen that will involve Hernando, Pasco and Fidelis and that takes Hillsborough out of that equation, but the really big need is the two seventy-five solution, so. So we'll give it a big swing on the ninth, yeah. So, um, so we'll give it a big swing on the 9th, yeah.
So Madam Chair, since, thank you, since you'd be, you'd send me that meeting this Friday?
Yeah.
This Friday? So in my, um, board on the times, I would watch some of the other meetings and things and Andy's assistants saw where, um, watching the committee meeting and the previous Tibarta meeting, it doesn't seem that analysis is 100% on board either besides Hillsborough. And then, and I'll just continue for a second and ask this question of you. If Hillsborough doesn't want to fund and Pinellas doesn't end up funding, how in the world can Pasco and Hernando subsidize the, for the other counties, especially with the main project we're talking about with the BRT? Majority, I mean, they talked about someone possibly 19 and things like that. The big one is like you mentioned, the, that, you know, 275 kind of corridor to I-75 to Wesley Chapel. If Hillsborough is not going to allow it to be built and expand those lanes and, and work with DOT. And they don't fund, how can we rightfully, you know, continue to fund ourselves?
Yeah.
What are we going to get out of it?
So that's, that's part of the big discussion we're going to have Friday. And it's not that Pinellas County doesn't want Tibarta to continue, it's, there is a commissioner from Pinellas, so they have to. This is my frustration that I'm the only Pasco County voice. We still don't have a governor appointee from Pasco. Hernando has two, two voices, two votes, and they want Tibarta to continue as well. And they, they are going to be the last one to really benefit from it, but, um.
Yeah, I spoke with.
Yeah, so. So what, what Commissioner Long is throwing out there is that Tibarta gets folded into the Regional Planning Council. And, and there are maybe, if, there may be one or two who think that's a good idea and that a lot who don't think that's a good idea. So that's one of the challenges that we'll be discussing on Friday. So it's just, do we keep doing what we're doing or do we need to do something different? And, and, you know, I, I don't have the magic answer. I just know it's really frustrating because in 20 years, in 10 years, people are going to say, why didn't you do something? Because all these people are moving here and they're not going to be able to get around. It's going to be, it's not now and it's bad enough now, but in 10 years, what is that going to look like?
Yeah, right.
Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, I think, I think we have a topic on, on September 12th at the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council as well. I'm not sure how the conversation is going to go, but I can't imagine the Regional Planning Council to take over a transit agency. I mean, Tibarta's not getting funded from the state from what I, as I see it, locally they're not getting funded. I don't know if there's a, a long game for them at this point.
A what?
A long game. Where, where do they go from here?
Yeah, it's just, it's, we're, we're just leaving so much money in Washington that could be coming down here to help pay. As a matter of fact, District 7, they had the money and have the money to fix the issue in 275 for most part. But, um, and they don't have to buy any right of way to, to harden the shoulder through Semol Heights. They have all the land they need and so they just have to harden it. No houses being sold or demolished. This is a frustrating thing. But I, I believe some of them, they're, um, want the highway to go away in, in that area.
Oh, that's, yeah, I saw that. That started like years ago.
It's an interesting dynamic, dynamic that we're dealing with.
Crazy, yeah.
So. But, um, I know they have, they have a lot of challenges with their, their internal movement around Hillsborough and they keep focusing on that and I just keep trying to remind them that's, that's the internal discussion, but Tibarta is the external discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Now, let's go, but you, you had mentioned about the federal side too. Didn't Tibarta actually not renew their federal lobbyist contract?
We, we're trying to save money.
Yeah, I understand. So who do they have working now on the federal side, I guess?
Well, we don't have, we don't have any project that we can ask for yet because we're still studying the one. The other one's ready to move to phase two, but if Hillsborough is not going to sign on, we can't move to the next phase. And, and so the law, the federal lobbyists that we did have is the same one that Pasco has and the same one that Pinellas has. So if we need something, we can, we can ask for that and without going there, but we're just trying to save money.
Sure, no, I understand. I was just wondering if, who is, we're going to pick that up?
We keep, we keep getting funded in Tallahassee, but, um, there's someone, there's someone in the governor's office that has the governor's ear that gets him to cancel us, so. And I kind of threw it out there last year, let's go ahead and make it a requirement that everyone pays their fair share. And it kind of puts their, everyone's hands on the table of where everyone sits. I'm kind of calling the question down there.
Gotcha.
Okay, so that's the end of my.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One thing back to your, um, we're talking about the scalloping. My assistant colleague just sent me a thing. She'd been in, in those conversations with us. And she says we probably need to get an updated scallop survey.
Okay.
So there may be something to take a look at.
And I sent you all, I emailed all of you, um, something from Elaine Chow, who was the Secretary of Transportation in the Trump administration about workforce. And America is facing an unprecedented worker shortage. And, uh, one of the things she says is to federally fund technical schools, which I am trying to make happen in Washington. Because right now we, we don't get to pull down that federal funding and, um, and the school district hasn't signed on for us. And so the money just sits there and no one gets it. So we're, we're trying to.
Probably been a better way to spend money than canceling these college loans.
Yeah.
Wow, imagine that. Could have been product, more, a little more productive, right?
All right, we're moving on to R-67. Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if I could invite Mr. Hill, Mr. Gandy, the Florida Sports Coast team, Adam and whoever else is coming up. We had talked last time about the awesome news that Florida Sports Coast of Pasco County won the Florida Senior Games for the next three years. So we thought it would be, um, great to have a presentation so you know exactly what the Florida Senior Games are and the benefit they'll have for our citizens here in Pasco County. So Adam, you can take it away.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, fellow commissioners. Thank you so much. Adam Thomas, Tourism Director. Thank you, Commissioner Moore, for bringing this conversation to the Board of County Commissioners. We are extremely excited to have not just one, not two, but three annual Florida Senior Games here in Pasco County. You know, we, we talk about it all the time about the many great things and the events that we bring in, but it's, it's based off relationships. And we have a great relationship with the state's agency, the Florida Senior, uh, Florida Sports Foundation that allows us to bring these types of events to Pasco County because there's a trust factor there. They trust in us, they trust in the community, they trust in our industry partners and they trust in the facilities to pull off an event such as the Florida Senior Games. With me today is OJ Hill and Nick Gandy, who are the, the brain trust behind the Florida Senior Games. But we wouldn't have him here today if it wasn't for the person who really owns the sports development for the Pasco County Tourism Office, which is Consuelo Sanchez, and she's here with us today. So thank you again. I'll turn it over to OJ to discuss and kind of present what's to come for Pasco County. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Starkey, um, all the county commissioners. Happy to be here with you all today. My name is Orenthius OJ Hill. I represent the Florida Sports Foundation as the Event Manager, but the person who happens to chair the Florida Senior Games and we're happy to be here in Pasco County. On behalf of Mrs. Angela Adams Suggs, our President and CEO, our Chairman Jesse Byder and the Governor Ron DeSantis, thank you all for allowing us to be in Pasco County for the next three years. Nick Gandy will do the presentation for us on the Florida Senior Games. For anybody in the room who doesn't know anything about the Florida Senior Games, um, you'll hopefully like this presentation. And if you're 50 and older, um, you can come join us in December. So Nick, take the presentation away.
Now, Madam Chair, did you hear what he just said?
50 and older.
I'm actually eligible for the senior games. Makes me.
I've been eligible.
I mean, I, I don't know, I thought it's, I thought I was 70 and older and Commissioner Oakley could at least know it, but.
I'm still.
I know, I know.
I'm still qualified. I'm over 50.
Again, thank you, commissioners. Commissioner Moore, I have worked with the Florida Senior Games long enough that I have advanced into competition age. And I am a bowler in the Capital City Senior Games in Tallahassee. I'm trying to bowl and compete while working at the Florida Senior Games. It's a little bit too much. But again, thank you all and thank you to Adam and Consuelo and the Florida Sports Coast for this three-year partnership between the Florida Sports Foundation and Florida Sports Coast. Pasco County becomes the ninth community, host community in Florida to host the Florida Senior Games on a multi-year level. This past year in 2021, we celebrated our 30th anniversary of the Florida Senior Games and over 50,000 athletes have competed in the Florida Senior Games since 1992. Those are athletes aged 50 and over and we've, yes, we've had three 100-year-old athletes compete in the Florida Senior Games. So for the next three years, 2022 through 2024, the first two weekends in December, Pasco County and Florida Sports Coast will be the center of the Florida Senior Games universe. And we hope to have approximately about 8,000 athletes come to Florida Sports Coast for those first two weekends in December for the next three years. Not only will these athletes be taking advantage of the facilities that have been constructed here in the last few years. In 2020, we were able to use the Wiregrass Sports, Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus and Sarah Vandenberg Tennis and Wellness Center. But they'll all, they'll be returning to those again and some other places. And because of the facilities offered in this area, we will be adding two new sports to the Florida Senior Games, padel and foot golf.
What was the first one?
Padel, which will be played at, at Sarah Vandenberg. And Saddle Brook Golf Course will be hosting foot golf. So those two sports will bring in international athletes. And the Florida Senior Games, because of where they sit on the calendar, being the last national event, state event to qualify for the National Senior Games, which we will be a qualifier for this year and in 2024, we've had athletes from over 40 states come to compete in the Florida Senior Games. And I always say every year that cities from Alachua to Zephyr Hills are represented in the Florida Senior Games. And I've counted over 200 cities where athletes have come to the Florida Senior Games to compete. We've even had athletes come from the Caribbean Islands. There's track teams from Barbados and Jamaica that come.
So these are international Florida.
Yes, yes, they're, they're international athletes come too. So we're, we're taking advantage of all the communities in, in Pasco County, Wesley Chapel, Zephyr Hills, Landville Lakes, Trinity, the whole gamut, east to west. And besides taking advantage of these athletic facilities your county has to offer, the Florida Senior Games is, is also about fellowship among the athletes. So once these athletes are done competing for the days that they compete, they come to spend time together. They'll be hanging out together in the hotel, catching up with one another, going out for dinner, taking in a lot of the amenities that the county has to offer. So the fellowship part and the camaraderie at the Florida Senior Games is going to spread over the next three years from the athletes and they'll tell each other, you didn't come to Pasco County last year, why not? You need to come next year. The Florida Sports Coast has a lot to offer besides the healthy and health benefits that the Senior Games offer. I like to say that the senior athletes, these are people, not the, the younger ones in the 50s and 60s. Some of them are still working, but the 65 and up athletes, these are people who have worked their careers. They've raised their family and this is now what they do. They compete in athletic competitions in the Florida Senior Games. And that's what Pasco County is going to benefit from. And once they start in their 50s, they keep going. They might have to take some time off because of some nagging injuries, but they always come back. So much though, in 2021, at our 30th Anniversary Games, we gave lifetime achievement awards to nine athletes. How they qualified for these lifetime achievement awards was they competed in all four decades in the Florida Senior Games.
That's great.
From 1992 to 2021. And that's a commitment right there. They probably started in their 50s and they were well into their 70s or 80s and they're still competing. So thank you for this opportunity and I, I hope that you all will pass this along. This is a first of a three-year commitment. Registration is open right now. We're already receiving registrations and we will be until November 15th. And on December 2nd, we'll be having a ribbon cutting ceremony at the Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus and we hope you'll all be there.
Are, are any events happening on the west side?
November 2nd or December 2nd?
December.
December.
I was teasing because I was.
We have golf in, in Trinity.
At Fox Hollow?
At Fox Hollow. And in the past, we've used Richie Racket for racquetball. They're, they're undergoing some renovations right now and, um, hopefully we'll be able to return there.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll get with you on an idea I have.
And I got, uh, uh, we were at the Florida Recreation and Parks Association Conference last week and a, a director from Holiday came up and approached us and asked about something they might be able to do in Holiday.
Yeah, we have a new park at Starkey Ranch District Park. There are tennis courts there, there's multi-use fields, there's softball fields. Um, it's a really nice softball complex that just opened. Do you have softball going on?
Yes, we do. Uh, right now, we, we host that in another, it's coming up next in a couple of weeks, actually.
Oh, it's not the same time.
It's away from our, our December dates, but who knows?
Is there someplace people can go to see a list of the activities?
Thank you for that reminder. FloridaSeniorGames.com.
Okay, because I'm going to go look myself.
FloridaSeniorGames.com and you can follow us on Facebook as well, Florida Senior Games.
Wonderful. We're excited that you're here.
And more excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Anything else? Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, very, very excited. When you said foot golf, I said, I hope this is regular golf too. So I think we had a couple of the commissioners that would like to probably play. I know I would.
It's very popular in the Senior Games and you'd be surprised, uh, of the number of golfers that shoot below their age.
Do they have to qual, do you have to qualify to participate?
In certain sports you do. The track and field, the swimming, the pickleball and the more popular events require a qualifying performance at one of 21 local games throughout the year leading up to December. But some, register and come on out.
And you mentioned padal?
Padel.
Padel. What's that?
Consuelo?
I'm still learning.
It's kind of a mixture between three sports. You have racquetball, tennis and pickleball.
Pickleball.
All played.
And there's a wall. There's a glass wall on the side.
Oh.
Yeah, that is, this is a very popular sport in Europe and Latin American. Therefore, we're going to have a lot of international attendees. But the sport itself is basically a mix between squash and racquetball. And you play it in four walls, glass doors. We have four of them right now at the Sarah Vandenberg Tennis Center. And that's the reason why we propose Floria Sports Foundation to include padel and foot golf as new sports for Floria Senior Games.
And are, are there any bicycle activities, like gravel riding is becoming very big, especially with the seniors, so.
And for cycling, all we offer is the 5 and 10K time trials.
Okay.
Which is just a lone rider competing against themselves and then the 20K and 40K run race.
Okay, so we do have that going on?
Yeah, yeah.
With this? Okay, wonderful.
And OJ just informed me for any of you that might want to participate, we won't require a qualifying performance. And once again, a big thank you to Florida Sports Coast. We've had a very good relationship over the years and we hope to make the Florida Senior Games and Florida Sports Coast a flagship event.
Excellent.
Wonderful, we're excited.
Appreciate it.
We are happy you're coming.
Big stuff.
Very good.
So, um, if, if you know Mrs. Suggs' husband is, uh, with the Florida Association of Counties, down there, so, great guy. Okay, I think that, is there anything else to come before us? All right, we're adjourned till 1:30. All right, we're adjourned till 1:30.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.